The City of Eureka's regular meeting for November 16th, 2021. And I will just, you probably have a little bit of a hint if you're in the room and you see the Japanese writing on the screen, that this is the 30th anniversary of our sister city partnership. So we'll hear a little bit more about that. But we will start with our regular opening business and with a roll call.
Mayor Seaman?
Here.
Councilmember Castellano?
Here.
Councilmember Moulton?
Here.
Councilmember Arroyo?
Here.
Councilmember Bauer is going to be joining by Zoom. Councilmember Bergel?
Here.
All right. Will you all join me, please, for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Mr. City Attorney Black, do we have a report out of closed session?
Yes, Mayor. No reportable actions were taken in closed session.
Thank you very much. And now, we are going to start the mayor's announcements, and I'm really excited to first read a proclamation for our sister city. After that, I am actually going to ask Councilmember Moulton to say a few words, and then we will have the mayor of Kamisu say a few words. Hello. Okay. Thirty years of sister city relations with the city of Kamisu. Okay, translating. November 16th, 2021. Whereas friendship among people of different countries and cultures is an excellent force in creating peace, tranquility, harmony, and understanding. Okay. And whereas Eureka and Kamisu first joined together to work towards this vision in 1991 to establish a lasting friendship between peoples of both communities. And whereas through the years, the two cities have worked together to involve their respective citizens in cultural exchanges, special programs, and youth projects. And whereas 2021 marks the 30th anniversary of our sister city relationship and lasting friendship with the people of the community of Kamisu, Japan. And whereas our continued sister city relationship adds richness, diversity, and mutual educational opportunities for our citizens. And whereas the city of Eureka wishes to commemorate the 30th anniversary of our sister city's relationship with Kamisu City and encourage harmony between cultures, communities, and people worldwide. And now, therefore, I, Mayor Susan Seaman, on behalf of the Eureka City Council, do hereby acknowledge its continuing friendship with Kamisu City and encourage all citizens to join in this special recognition. And we're so glad to have you here. I think it's 10:30, 11-ish tomorrow morning. Am I right?
Good evening, members of the council and everyone attending this meeting.
I'm Susan Seaman, mayor of Kamisu.
It's good to see you again, Mayor Susan.
It's good to see you, too. It's been a while. It's been a hard couple of years since we saw each other last.
We have the hard time, too.
Thank you so much, Eureka City Mayor Susan Seaman. As you look back on the 30 years of our friendship between Eureka City and Kamisu City, she gave us a splendid proclamation that we will continue this friendship. On behalf of citizens of Kamisu City, I like to express my heartfelt gratitude to you all and pray that our longtime friendship will develop further in the future. I am grateful from the bottom of my heart. Thank you very much.
Thank you. It's, it's very good to see you. We were supposed to have an exchange, but we couldn't because of COVID. But we do have a new council member. Councilmember Moulton has agreed to be our liaison for Kamisu City, and she is working very hard to try to establish some programs until we can see each other again. So, Councilmember Moulton?
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. And thank you, Mayor. I am honored to have this responsibility. I really appreciate the value of cultural and economic exchanges across the Pacific.
I look forward to working with you all to find different ways to share our cultures.
I wanted to thank KIFAA, the Kamisu International Friendship Association, I think, in Japan. As well as the Hara Center here in Eureka, and Jay Tillman for all of their work helping to coordinate these efforts so far. And we're gonna just make it bigger and better. It's gonna be great.
And your trees look beautiful. They're growing well. The cherry trees are very pretty.
The cherry trees have bloomed?
Not quite. Probably the next month or so. I'm guessing by February?
I'd like to visit your city next time when the blossoms are blooming. And we'd like to develop our friendship further more.
I think we could arrange for that. And I will very much look forward to seeing you again.
Thank you very much today.
Thank you very much. And we will be in touch. Congratulations on 30 years to both of us. Yay! All right. Do you have anything else to add? Or we'll say good night, and we'll let, good morning to you. And you guys could go start your day, have lunch. Goodbye.
Goodbye. Thank you very much.
Bye.
Thank you. All right. Our next proclamation is for the National Alzheimer's Disease Awareness and National Family Caregivers Month. And I believe that Councilmember Castellano is gonna read that.
Thank you, Mayor Seaman. And it's meaningful. I know many people's lives have been impacted by Alzheimer's, and for sure, members of my family had Alzheimer's. So I appreciate all of the work being done for people about this. This is the City of Eureka Proclamation in recognition of National Alzheimer's Disease Awareness and National Family Caregivers Month, November 2021. Whereas more than 6 million Americans are living with Alzheimer's, and this number is projected to rise to nearly 14 million in 30 years. And whereas Alzheimer's disease is the sixth leading cause of death in America and the third leading cause of death in California, 1 in 5 Californians age 65-plus will develop dementia. And whereas there are 690,000 people with Alzheimer's living in the state of California, over 3,000 of whom live in Humboldt, and an estimated 9,000 caregivers in Humboldt County who are involved in the care of a loved one with Alzheimer's. And whereas in 2020, the lifetime cost of care for a person living with dementia was $373,527. And whereas the responsibilities of caring for someone with dementia often fall to women, approximately 2/3 of caregivers are women. And whereas the Alzheimer's Association is marking November as 2021 National Alzheimer's Disease Awareness Month and National Family Caregivers Month. And now, therefore, I, Leslie Castellano, on behalf of Mayor Susan Seaman and the Eureka City Council, do hereby proclaim November as National Alzheimer's Disease Awareness Month and National Family Caregivers Month in Humboldt.
And we have Lynn McKenna to come and receive this one.
Can I do this? All right. Thank you very much. I am here tonight to accept this proclamation on behalf of the local Alzheimer's Association. My name is Lynn McKenna, and I am the advocacy chairperson for our Humboldt County region. And the statistics that Leslie read are a little bit frightening, but we're trying to make progress. So let me clarify something right off the top of the thing. Alzheimer's has become the catch-all phrase for dementia. Alzheimer's is just one kind of dementia. There are multiple, multiple other kinds of dementia. And within Alzheimer's itself, there are several kinds. There's frontal lobe, there's Lewy body. They're discovering early onset. They've now discovered an Alzheimer's that strikes people in their early 50s. It's not just an old, older person's disease. It's becoming more and more prevalent in younger and younger people. So that's kind of scary. But, and then like the proclamation said, most caregivers are family members. They're unpaid. And it's a very daunting task. And a lot of caregivers end up with health issues themselves because of the stress. So it's really important that we recognize this and try to do everything we can to help them. So I really want to let everybody know that there are things available locally. We have a local staff person. Her name is Kim Quelo, and her phone number is 707-407-8826. She's available to help answer your questions and point you in the direction of where you can get some resources and some extra help. The Alzheimer's Association funds a 24/7 hotline number that is staffed by professional people, not volunteers. They speak over 200 languages. So it's a valuable, very valuable resource. They have a website that's in both English and Spanish that has a wealth of information and referrals. And we also have brochures that we're distributing locally that are both in English and Spanish and directed to sort of our underserved populations, Native Americans, Asians, and whatnot. So if you know anybody that has this disease, family, friends, or whatever, please contact us so we can get them this information. There's also information for you as a caregiver. And there's a great brochure about what are the 10 warning signs of Alzheimer's. We all forget our keys, or lose our glasses, or misplace something. That is not dementia. It becomes dementia when you can't remember that you had car keys, or that you had a car, or that you even had a folder that you've lost. So there are some real significant differences. So again, I want to thank you on behalf of the local Alzheimer's Association and everyone who is dealing with this horrible disease. While November has been designated as National Alzheimer's Awareness and Caregivers Awareness, this disease is 24/7, 365 days a year. It does not stop, and neither will we. The Alzheimer's Association is committed to finding a cure for this disease and funds research in 20 countries around the world. So again, thank you for the proclamation, and I hope this information helps some of you. Please don't be afraid to reach out to us. We are, thank you.
Thank you. And I will say that their staff person, Kim Quelo, works very, very hard. And their whole team, volunteer team as well, is very active. And what a fabulous resource to see how much this, this disease is expanding and how many lives it touches. So grateful to know that you guys are out there. Our final proclamation, I'm gonna talk about it a little bit, and then I'm gonna ask Councilmember Arroyo to read it. But it's one that we've been working on for a while. Sometime last year, I can't remember when it was, 2019, council, we talked about the number of traffic incidents that happened in our area. And not just in Eureka, although Eureka certainly has our share of them, but regionally. And so we went out, I went out to start a traffic safety task force. And so since last March, a group of people have been meeting, and I want to mention who some of those folks are. It includes Virginia Bass from the Board of Supervisors, Beth Burks from the Humboldt County Association of Governments, or HCOG, Colin Fisk from the Coalition for Responsible Transportation Priorities, Caroline Griffith from the city's Transportation Safety Commission, Lisa Fryreer from State Farm Insurance, Deborah Garnes, the mayor of Riedel, Brian Girving from our Public Works Department, Debbie Hart, who worked as a part of the Slow the F Street Down campaign, Emily Hogan from the Department of Public Health, Blue Lake Mayor Adalene Jones, Tom Mattson from the Public Works Group at the County of Humboldt, Captain Sean Morris from the California Highway Patrol, Brittany Powell from the Eureka Police Department, Captain Brian Stevens from the Eureka Police Department, and Bob Walters from Eureka Driving School, and Jenny Weiss from RCAA. And we would meet about once a month, and our goal was to try to address the crisis of roadway fatalities locally. So we want streets that are safe and comfortable and convenient for everyone who uses them, regardless of their social status or income. They should be safe, especially for our most vulnerable users, including the elderly, youth, pedestrians, bicyclists, people with disabilities. And so we talked about the Vision Zero goal, which is to have zero injury accidents in our area and work towards that until that goal is achieved. And so what we could do with our group and, in very little time, was develop a marketing campaign. And what we came up with was that slowing down was a huge emphasis for everybody. So we had to get all of those folks to sort of figure out what we wanted to focus on. And that was really just slowing down and remembering that driving is a cooperative activity. That was something that our driving school instructor talked about a lot. And I thought that was a really nice reminder. Because as a city, there are things that we do, and we do, to improve public safety on the streets, which is engineering, infrastructure, enforcement. But really, until all of us, including the people on the road, commit to safe streets, we're not gonna make a difference. So we're really wanting to make this a whole, make this all of our issue, and get everybody to participate in safe streets. So Councilmember Arroyo, would you read the proclamation, please?
Thank you, Mayor. So this proclamation is in recognition of countywide traffic safety campaign launched November 16th, 2021. Whereas Humboldt County ranked number one out of 58 counties in 2018 for traffic collisions involving a pedestrian, has fatal collision rates nearly double the national average and nearly triple those of California. And whereas effective transportation safety policies include a multifaceted approach, including infrastructure development and improvements, enforcement of laws and education, safe streets. And safe streets also rely on the personal responsibility and behavior of those who use them. And whereas drivers have an inherent responsibility to maintain a culture of respect and courtesy, avoid causing harm, and protect the community's most vulnerable residents. And whereas Humboldt County residents pride themselves on being values-driven, innovative, proactive problem solvers, and responsible and responsive protectors of community residents and visitors. And whereas national statistics and local experience indicate that low-income people, people of color, older people, and people with disabilities are more likely to be killed while walking or biking. And we are committed to addressing these tragic inequities. Now, therefore, I, Natalie Arroyo, on behalf of the Eureka City Council, do hereby resolve that Eureka recognizes that safely navigating our streets and sidewalks is a cooperative activity. And Eureka believes that traffic collisions are not inevitable, and adopts the Vision Zero goal to work towards eliminating all traffic fatalities and injuries while increasing safe, healthy, equitable mobility for all.
We don't have anybody to receive this. I will receive this on our behalf. And tomorrow at 11 o'clock here at City Hall, we're gonna have a press conference with many of the participants in the task force. This proclamation will be read all throughout the county, and we have a, some materials that we'll be distributing, including lawn signs and banners that remind everybody to go slow and watch the road. So, thanks. And you'll all be hearing more about this very soon. And now we will move on to our public comment period. Yep. It does come before public hearings. I'm so confused. And then consent calendar. I don't know why I just had a little bubble in my brain that. So, public comments. Do we have anybody here who wants to speak on an issue that is not on the agenda?
Hello, Mayor, City Council members. Is this on?
Yeah. You have to turn the...
So I hear a lot of talk about slowing down in Eureka. That's a good idea. I have no problem with that. But you got a lot of mentally ill people and drug addicts running around Eureka. Every time I'm in Eureka, I see two or three of them almost get hit. I could show you a video of a guy on his knees right next to 101, crossing the crosswalk, doing aerobics in the crosswalk on his knees, all kinds of activities like that. Seen a lady on a little kid's bicycle almost get hit. What I'm getting at is, you need to do something about helping the people that are mentally ill and the people that are on drugs. I mean, I'm not a council member. I don't know what that would take. But I mean, just look at the shape of this city. Needles laying everywhere, people getting hit by cars because they're drugged out of their mind, not watching where they're going, all drugged up. Basically, the same thing I tell you every time I come for the last three years. You got a needle litter problem. You got hazardous syringes laying all over the place, full of diseases. And you know how many there are out there because you've seen the number yourself. Kim helps pick them up. I mean, how can you just ignore that problem? Something's gotta be done. I was here two weeks ago, and I asked the mayor to please step up and try to find some solutions. And, I mean, I've been looking. I ain't been seeing any comments or any pages about it. It's like, we come here and we talk, and you just ignore us. I mean, it's not easy to get up here and talk to you guys. I'm not after any of you, trying to bother any of you, but I don't understand why you don't do something about it. I mean, it's getting old. This is four years of this. And nothing's ever been done about it, except babysitting Hatcher. That's it. And I know you don't answer questions, so I'm trying to word it the best I can. But you got a problem with, you know, people that are mentally ill. I understand that. And on drugs at the same time. And those are the people getting hit by the cars. Not every one of them, obviously not. But you have a problem with them walking right out in front of cars. I mean, I've almost hit a couple people. I've seen a couple people barely escape death. And I'm not talking about somebody going 60 miles an hour, or just driving normal. And a car hits you at 30 miles an hour, you're gonna be in serious trouble. I say, I don't like coming here. I don't like getting up here and speaking, but nothing's ever done about it. And can't you guys get together and do something about it? Is there some programs that you can start? Is there some way you can help these drug addicts get off drugs, or the mentally ill get, you know, to get better? Or, I mean, like I say, I'm not a, I don't have the solution myself, but I'd sure be willing to help anybody that would want to help me do something about it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. I appreciate everybody's time. And this is my first time speaking here, second time actually coming to one of these events. I was inspired to come here because I've been here for over a decade as a member of the community, and I've been seeing things go downhill. And at the last meeting, I thought there were some relevant points made where I saw discussions coming up about disposal of e-vape pen cartridges as hazmat, but we're not doing anything about needles. Tonight, I'm hearing about helping out people with dementia. But I gotta ask, are people so soon to forget that people that aren't vaccinated or watching to vaccinate it hate them because their vaccines aren't working? And then you guys discuss mandates? That is a threat of mental, physical, and emotional abuse. Mandates don't work. They create division in a community that I used to love and see united. I would not live here right now if it was not a community that I loved. This is not the community that I recognize anymore. We have homeless, mentally ill people that are addicted to drugs, throwing biological hazards across the town, in the city, in the county, for my child to get harmed on, let alone myself. And I'm supposed to sit here and hear this talk about everything you're doing? But the results are not in the field. In the field, I worry about my child and myself and everybody else. I would pray and beg y'all as leadership to step up and be leaders. Stop the divisive nature and rhetoric with this mandate crap. Because if you're all vaccinated, you don't need to worry about everybody else being vaccinated. Go get your boosters and feel safe. If you don't feel safe, I don't want it. If y'all are doing something about this needle stuff, then why do I keep finding it? Why do I need to teach my four-year-old daughter that there is a, what a needle is? A few weeks ago, I told my daughter what to do when gunshots happen outside of my house. I pulled her to the floor, and I told her to lay low. I told her the reality of the world, because leadership is failing us. To me, this is not a partisan issue. To me, this is a leadership issue. If our leadership is failing us, I hope y'all are replaced. And I know there's action being taken with the Board of Supervisors with the county level. I know there's a chain of command or something like that. But I don't care, I don't care about the chain of command. I care about my leadership representing me as well. I'm part of the community. I have been, and I will remain. But I will fight for my daughter, and I will fight for my neighbors. That's all I have to say. Please represent us.
Well, Eureka, you truly lost it. Every time you walk through Old Town, drive through Old Town, you see all the people staggering through the streets, highly intoxicated, running into traffic. We talked about people that exposed themselves because of their mental status in Old Town all day long. Tourism is a phenomenon of the old days. I have a shop in Old Town, and I can tell you there are barely any more tourists coming. And if the tourists come, they have a scared look in their faces. And get the hell out of this town as quickly as they can. And they regret that they stopped in the first place. That's a different issue. The needles and the feces, all the other pleasantries that our sightseeing entails when you go to Old Town, right? Yeah? Old Town is a depleted, depressed zombie wasteland. Our sheriff called that dead a couple of years ago on National California, on California Report on NPR Radio. What are you guys doing about it? A couple of years ago, somebody told us that, oh, we're valuable community members, 50-year-old family dads that need to be integrated and de-stigmatized. Those people are flooding in, like somebody opened the gates of hell, and they spit out low-level demons all over Old and Downtown. Look at the closed businesses. Look at the feces. Look at the biohazard. Open your eyes. All the kumbaya and smoke blowing, smoke each other's rumpuses, up each other's rumpuses will not change reality. And if I happen to be the boy that runs down the street and says the empress is butt naked and has a needle hanging out of her arm, as I did many years ago, and all the hate monger on public television by one of the city council members, still awaiting an apology for that, by the way, singling out a citizen and a political activist is really, shows your classiness. You should all be recalled. We need a capable city council, because this is the most mismanaged town west of the Mississippi and east of Japan, guaranteed. And if the people of Japan would see the shape that this city is in, they would drop us like a hot potato. I'm German, as you know. The Japanese and the Germans have many similarities in terms of being cleanly, orderly, and all the other good stuff. I can tell you that there is no city in Germany of that size, not even Berlin, where I'm from, 3.5 million people, that has... from, three and a half million people, that has the issues that Eureka is facing. It's a depleted, depressed zombie wasteland because of the mismanagement throughout the city leadership. You all need to be recalled. And there will be lawsuits coming. We're prepping them. There is no worries about it. Got a good lawyer, as you well know. And we will come after you guys for negligence, for the environmental hazard that you create, and for the economic downfall of the city and killing the golden goose called tourism. Your names will be associated with the downfall of Eureka. You're the henchwomen and henchmen of Eureka. That will make you history. That will make your city history. That's what your names will be known for.
Come on up.
Good evening. My name's Joanne McGary. I'm going these days sometimes by McGreta, because I'm very inspired by Greta Thunberg. And one of the reasons I came here to Eureka, because I live in the city of Arcata tonight, was because you have an open in-person city council meeting. And I wanted to see how easy and safe it was to have all of us be here in person, looking at each other face-to-face and talking. There are a couple of issues on the agenda I'm here for as well. But it's interesting that you had the Safety Task Force proclamation read today, because as I'm driving here, because the buses do not run after a certain time in the evening, I had to drive my car, and I'm recognizing how dark the streets are and how I really had to be very careful in looking out for pedestrians and other people on the streets as I'm trying to come here and park and attend this meeting. I'm here also because I know that the draft of the Climate Action Plan has been presented to the different municipalities in the county that's been worked on for months now. It's very late in the game to even have just a draft, let alone we're not having a final climate action plan yet put in place. And, you know, time is ticking, as we well know globally, on this climate matter. And so, I am working to make sure that Humboldt County and the cities therein do what they can and declare climate emergencies and demonstrate significant action on the climate issues. And transportation is one of them. And I would love to have been able to take the bus here and take it home, but it's not possible. So, transportation is one of the big, huge issues that I think everyone needs to look at in this thing. And it will improve safety if we're not driving our cars and we're taking the bus. So, thank you for having an in-person meeting so that I could attend and go back to my town and say, look, they can do it in Eureka, we can do it in Arcata, and let's get the climate action thing going, not just blah, blah, blah. So, thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anybody else in the in-house that wants to speak? And if not, I'll move to Zoom and see, do we have any public comment on Zoom? All right. Latonya, go ahead. There, Latonya, you're still muted.
Okay. Hi. My name is Latonya Jacob. I am a new resident in the city of Eureka. I thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. I do, will be submitting my comments via email. I do have a question regarding emails that I have submitted previously. We're looking at 8/7, 8... I'm sorry, 9/18, 9/14, and 10/19. Those comments that I submitted on those days, is it possible to have those issues or those items that I mentioned in there addressed in additional, in futures to the council meetings? Some of them I do see, and some of them I don't. So, I just wanted to make sure that you have those dates. If you like, I can send them again, along with my comments for tonight. And also, I wanted to reiterate some of the concerns I heard from previous speakers just now. The fourth speaker, I don't know her name, I just have their name, their number. And I did, I do agree with her. As far as the bus service goes, it is important that the bus service be extended. That is something that I did suggest as a member of the committee for the Transportation Committee, SSAC, that the bus service be extended. If there's going to be meetings or community events, such as that event during the summer with the senator at that ballpark in Arcata, in order for me to have been able to attend that, I needed to... The bus service had to be operable during the time when that was... I think it was supposed to take place in the evening, I thought. I could be wrong. But it just didn't work out that I was going to be able to get transportation, since I rely on the bus. And yes, I do value the bus service, and I ask that you please do not discontinue, but extend the service. And thank you.
Thank you, Latonya. Do we have anybody else on Zoom who would like to speak for public comment? All right. Then we will move on to our public hearing. So, item 101, Bill Number 1006 CS, Ward Boundaries. And Assistant City Manager Powell, will you be doing that one?
Yes. So, Mayor and Council, on the ward boundaries, this is the third time before council at the, I think, per the agenda summary. The first one, we had brought, received direction to have the public participate through the loco and their ward boundary toolkit that they had had. And at the second meeting, council considered five or six publicly submitted ward boundaries for maps, and along with the staff-recommended map. Election law requires that four public meetings are held regarding our new boundaries. And of course, the reason we needed to adjust our boundaries is because of the 2020 census and the changes in the census block. So, before you tonight is the staff-recommended map. And we have Senior Planner Riley Topolasky here to answer any questions you may have regarding that map. We haven't received any written comments from the public, but tonight we suggest that you... or we recommend that you hold a public hearing, gather public comment, and then introduce the ordinance for its first reading this evening. And I'm available for any questions.
All right. Does anybody have any questions for either Assistant City Manager Powell or Riley? Not? If not, then I will open up the public hearing and ask for any public comments.
Latonya is on Zoom and has a comment.
Okay. Latonya, go ahead.
The boundaries, you say, is due to the census that was published? That was due to the... Is... Did... What does the bylaw say? I don't know. I don't know if you can ask, as far as giving the people of Eureka and the surrounding, all of the people in Humboldt County, are they aware that the hearing was going to be tonight? Do we need to have more time? I'm just suggesting, that's my suggestion, have an additional time to make sure that that the hearing is publicized. I know this is in the minutes, and this was available last week. But looking at it, I think this is something that really needs... I would hate for us to be... I would... That's my question. That's my suggestion. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other comments from Zoom?
Caroline Griffith.
Caroline Griffith. Go ahead.
Good evening. I just wanted to quickly say thank you for moving forward with these boundary changes that are very minimal. I think it'll be really easy for people to adjust to this, so I appreciate you going forward with the easiest option. Thanks.
Thank you.
No one else on Zoom at this point?
All right. And nobody... Do we have anybody in-house who has a comment on the ward boundaries? If not, I will close the public hearing and bring it back to council. Councilmember Arroyo.
Well, I move that we waive reading, read by title only, and introduce Bill Number 100 Taxi, Title III, Chapter 37, Elections, Section 37.02, Attachment A. I'll second. And I just wanted to make a comment to the question that was asked. So, we will have a couple more meetings after this. One more, excuse me, one more meeting after this. And it has been picked up by the local press and covered a bit. So, we'll certainly have one more opportunity for public input. And hopefully, people are hearing about it through some additional press coverage that's been happening. But I think that has helped draw attention to this, and I've certainly gotten a number of comments that were similar to one of our speakers thanking us for making... or for proposing really minor changes.
Thank you. So, we have a motion, and we have a second. We had a little discussion. Does anybody else have any discussion to add? And I don't want to forget that we have Councilmember Bauer out there. All right. I think we... I think we could vote, unless that wave was a...
I think if you can go ahead and vote using the buttons, and then I can call on Councilmember Bauer. So, hopefully... There we go.
Councilmember Bauer, please vote. Thank you. Unanimous yes vote, motion carries.
Thank you very much. So, now we are on the Consent Calendar item. And I do have one item that's been asked to be pulled, which is J3, Participation in the Nationwide Opioid Settlements. Does anybody want anything additionally pulled? And if not, can I have a motion, please, to accept the consent calendar? That's it.
So, moved. Wrong button, sorry. Second.
All right. So, we have a motion and a second to approve after pulling J3. All in favor, go ahead and vote, and then you can ask Councilmember Bauer.
Councilmember Bauer?
Aye.
Unanimous yes vote, motion carries.
All right. So, Item J3 was pulled. Councilmember Arroyo asked for it. I think it's really just more to share some information. So, I'll go ahead and let you sort of talk about why you pulled it and...
I'd be happy to. So, this is something that the council, I think, is pretty familiar with, but I hoped that we would have the opportunity for the public to hear about it. I know we heard lots of public comment about a desire to address opioid use disorder and some of the impacts of that. Unfortunately, some of those folks have left, but I still think it would be beneficial for the public to understand what will happen next as we proceed through this. So, I know our city attorney is prepared to tell us about it.
Also, and one other thing, when you do tell us about it, too, City Attorney Black, if you could talk a little bit about your role in helping with this.
Well, thank you, Councilmember and Mayor. This settlement was negotiated at a national level, much of it. And the city of Eureka was one among somewhere around 3,000 local jurisdictions nationally that filed suit, and those suits were aggregated into a multi-district litigation in the district court in northern Ohio. At the local level, or at the state level, I should say, there was a need to negotiate with the office of the Attorney General as to how the proceeds, the California proceeds of the national settlement, would be distributed between the state and the counties and the cities in the state, including those that did file suit, among which Eureka was one, one of about 80 local jurisdictions, but also among hundreds of jurisdictions that are large enough to make effective use of these funds. So, in terms of the role that Eureka played, I was a member of a fairly large group of about 35 county councils and city attorneys that began meeting over a year ago to talk about our negotiations with the Attorney General. And eventually, I became a member of an 11-member negotiating group that actually conducted meetings with the Attorney General's office. And I think we were, I think, quite successful in those negotiations. I haven't spent the time to review the allocation agreements involving other states, but pretty much every state has to have an allocation agreement. And I've been told that the California allocation agreement is probably the most favorable in the nation to local jurisdictions, i.e. cities and counties. To me, that's important, because it's at the local level that the actual problems caused by the opioid crisis are experienced. You know, we see them every day, and I know that our police department and community services department workers are actually confronted with some of these issues. And we will now get some money to help support local efforts to confront this crisis. And that money should start to flow early next year, and it will be spread out over 18 years, which will allow the city to budget, to have, you know, to actually develop some sustainable programs and/or facilities to assist in meeting these, in meeting these problems. The county is also a participant in this litigation, and it will receive funds. As you have probably seen in the press, Fortuna and Arcata are large enough to actually receive direct allocation or apportionment of these funds if they choose to receive it that way. So, hopefully, this will be a widespread, community-based effort, and hopefully will have a direct impact.
Excellent. Does anybody else have any questions for City Attorney Black? Is there anybody in the public who would like to make a comment on this item? Latonya?
I just... The hand is raised, and I'm... Thank you. I just wanted to... You said comment, so no questions, but I... I just want to make sure, when you say the county or California, the state of California, are we talking about only Humboldt County, which is listed, Arcata and Eureka only? Or did I miss that? As far as disbursement of funds, I'm just trying to figure out what is... Who are these? Is it Humboldt County only? That's...
This is a nation.
Or is it all of California?
It's nationwide.
Right. But for the California, who is... Who are the people who is going to be getting disbursement? This Humboldt County only?
We will get some, as will people all over the state, as will different cities.
Okay. So, I'm just trying to make sure to tie this into the... This is the first or second speaker that talked about, yeah, the first speaker talked about the needles and the people getting... And then one of the speakers, was the third speaker, talks about people getting hit. So, that is related to that. That's what I'm thinking. And I just want to make sure I'm making the connection correctly.
Thank you very much. I think that we all kind of have that connection in our brains. I think Councilmember Arroyo even mentioned that. All right. Any other public comments on this item? If not, I'll bring it back to council for a motion to approve it. Councilmember Bregel.
Well, I recommend that we adopt a resolution of the City Council of the city of Eureka approving participation in nationwide opioid settlement litigation with McKesson, Cardinal Health, Amara Source Bergen, and Johnson Pharmaceuticals, Inc., and to appoint the city attorney as the city's authorized representative, and authorizing the city attorney to execute necessary documents and take all reasonable and necessary actions. And if I could just make one quick comment?
So, just to be clear, just a quick one. Just to be clear, Latonya, so this funding is nationwide. The whole state of California will be receiving funding of different types and different amounts. Humboldt County will be rece... As part of California, will be receiving part of those monies. And then the cities in Humboldt County, Eureka, Arcata, Fortuna, have that opportunity as well, so that we can start bringing in some types more, supporting more treatment...
so that we can start bringing in some types more, supporting more treatment for our local people in that type of situation. So I appreciate you asking. And there's a point of clarification.
And I'll second the motion.
Thank you very much. Any further discussion on this? Councilmember Arroyo.
I just want to particularly recognize our city attorney, Bob Black, for his instrumental role. And, you know, Eureka was one of the front runners of this, you know, this group of, of public agencies really pushing for this. And while in some ways, I think the public dialogue has been around the, you know, the settlement in lieu of some other forms of accountability, I think ultimately I see this as a real win for our community. And I'm really proud that we were able to demonstrate such significant impacts from opioid use disorders and to our community as a whole, you know, and that our, our city attorney really was instrumental in us entering in so early into this litigation and helping show how bad these impacts have been for our community, but also helping to work with other cities and really making it very collaborative. So I'm so grateful for all that work. It's been years in the making. And I think this is a really exciting opportunity to get upwards of a couple million dollars over the next almost, almost 20 years to address some of these impacts in our community. And frankly, I was really hoping that the folks who come to every council meeting to say that we're not doing anything would be here to hear about this. Because we just have to sit here and listen, whether we like or agree with what people are commenting about or not. And this is a rare, an important opportunity for us to get to do something about these impacts that have been caused by such irresponsible marketing and overprescription of opioids in this community and in communities throughout the nation and the state. So I'm really glad that this is the outcome and that we have a new opportunity to try something different and to fund a whole suite of programs that will address the, the root causes of this and the impacts that we see, such as needles, et cetera. So I think there's a lot of great opportunity. I just want to acknowledge City Attorney Black in particular for all that hard work, but also all of our staff who aided in getting the data together that we really needed to make a compelling case. So thank you very much.
Here, here. All right. We have a motion, a second, some much deserved praise for our city attorney. Thank you for advocating for the local areas to get more funding as well. And now we can vote.
Councilmember Bauer?
Aye.
Unanimous yes vote, motion carries.
All right. So now we are going to move on to our ordinances and resolutions section. And we are going to start with the single payer health system support. And I'm going to have Councilmember Bregel open that up.
Thank you, Mayor. So this was brought forward to me by Catherine Donahue. And she's going to come up in a few minutes to speak about this. But this is a project and this is something that's been being worked on for quite a long time now. I believe healthcare is a human right. And so that's why it's really important for us to have an opportunity to discuss this further. And so with that, Catherine, if you'd be willing to come up and tell us about what's happening.
Good evening, Mayor Seaman and council. Thank you for having us here to be able to provide information and discuss this very important topic. My name is Catherine Donahue. I'm a member of the Healthcare for All Physicians for National Health Program here in Humboldt County. And I'm also a member of the California Alliance for Retired Americans, which healthcare access and single payer is their number one issue that they're always working on, which would surprise people because you think, well, you have Medicare, why do you worry about this? But Medicare doesn't include many things. And we all that are on Medicare pay extra, to the tune of me, about $500 a month in extras that have to be provided, things that Medicare doesn't cover. So I am here to request the support for a resolution. The resolution is in support of our, our state bill, AB 1400, which provides single payer healthcare for every resident of California. And also on that resolution is mention of the federal bill, which is the Jayapal Bill in the House, which is 1976. And that would provide a Medicare for All for every resident of this country. It's, this is an important issue because our current healthcare system, I think everyone knows, is fragmented. It is broken. It is very expensive. And there are millions of people that are not insured because they can't afford it or underinsured. Every doctor's office, every hospital, anyone that provides as a provider for healthcare has to battle with insurance companies for reimbursements. And people are forced to pay high premiums, copays and deductibles. Can you afford the Platinum Plan or the Gold Plan or what can you afford? And municipalities, counties and cities spend millions of dollars on insurance premiums for their employees, which takes a big bite out of your funds that you have to do things like pick up needles or the meetings I have been here or listened to online. There's always somebody here talking about the mentally ill and the needles that are all over the county. So this would be most helpful. California is the fifth largest economy in the world. And I, there is no reason why we can't figure out how to provide healthcare for our citizens here in California. Here in Humboldt County, I don't know if you're aware of the Waterfront Recovery Services, which does an excellent job. They're a medical detox center here in Eureka. In the past month, they had thousands and thousands of dollars in denied private insurance premiums that they don't have now to pay their bills. So that's a prime example of the people, and everyone that gets admitted there have mental issues, have mental health issues. It's not just that they use drugs because they feel like it. They have significant mental health issues. So that's just not acceptable anymore. It's never been acceptable. Healthcare insurance companies make profits by denying care. That's how they make profits. They are a no added value cost middleman to our health, ability to access healthcare. And the administrative costs for these insurance companies provide millions of dollars in CEO pays, advertising and paying their shareholder dividends. That's like money that could go to healthcare and take care of people. Humboldt County is rural. We have a large indigenous, we have Latinx community, a large Latinx community here. We have many people of color that live here. And most are suffering under our current inequitable and overpriced and underperforming healthcare system. Struggle to pay, they struggle to pay premiums, copays and deductibles. And many do not access preventative care because of the cost. If you don't access preventative care, you're not going to stay well. You're going to come to the hospital at the last minute, and then you're not going to be able to be helped. Like people that aren't getting boosters or vaccinations, they make up 99% of the people that have died of COVID. COVID has shown us, this pandemic has shown us how broken our healthcare system is. So the single payer has no, this single payer bill has no cost, any single payer bill at the point of service. You don't pay anything. There are no networks. You can go wherever you want to go to whatever doctor you want. You don't need referrals. You could just take your, I'm a resident of California card, healthcare, Calcare card, and you just go to wherever you need to get service and you can get preventative care. What is covered is inpatient and outpatient care, preventative care, emergency care, primary care, specialty care, vision, hearing, dental, mental health and substance abuse services, prescription medications, medical equipment supplies, diagnostics and treatments, long-term care, everything that we need to access to be healthy and to keep our community and ourselves healthy. I would be happy to take questions. I, how, you know, the, the biggest question people always ask is, how in the world will we pay for this? There are multiple ways that this can be paid for. It's not, I'm not an economist. There are multiple studies that have been done that show how we could do this in this state and in our country. And it would, it, it would be cheaper, so much less expensive, and everybody would be covered. It's not my business to figure out how to do it. That's why we elect people that are legislators that, that need to figure this out. The bill that we have, AB 1400, is a policy bill. And I think that you all know that there are different kinds of bills. A policy bill sets the policy. And an economic bill figures out how you're going to pay for it. We're not going to be able to figure out how to pay for it, or we're not going to be able to apply for waivers until we have a policy. The federal government can, it's been provided in the federal government that, let's see, where did I write this? One day on. There it is. Waiver authorities could be used to integrate federal healthcare programs into a single state healthcare system, payer system. A consolidated waiver process established under section 1332 of the ACA was created in part for the purpose of making the process of establishing single payer in states easier. But a state cannot apply for a waiver program if no program has been established by law. So first we have to have the policy. And then we apply for the waivers, and then we figure out the economics. The economics can be a fair progressive taxation that would replace premiums, copays and deductibles, and other forms of cost sharing, relieving low and middle income people. Those are the people that are suffering the most because they don't have health insurance, either from their jobs or from, they can't afford it. They can't afford premiums. They don't go to get their preventative care because they can't afford it. Every citizen, every resident of the state for California would be covered and receive a healthcare card, which I had said earlier. And when you could go to your doctor, specialist or the emergency room, you show your card and you get service. And the physician bills, the government insurance, which pays the provider directly, they pay them directly, and you get to focus on recovery. You don't have to worry about, gosh, how much am I, how am I going to pay for this extensive treatment I need for my cancer? You don't have to worry about that. You just have to worry about getting better. I'd be happy to answer any questions, anyone has. And I hope you will consider this resolution. We are working to get municipalities on board to show our legislators that this is an important issue, that we want support, any, 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 I don't, any, the word went away, asking people to, whether they want a single payer system or not, 60 to 80% of the population absolutely wants to have this happen. So us as citizens would like to have this. I would like to have this. And I would think anybody that pays large amounts of health insurance premiums for their employees would want to have it also. It would relieve a lot of pressure from the budget. So please consider this, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Does anybody have questions? Okay, Councilmember Bregel.
So since I forgot to mention it, what other municipalities in our area have already done resolutions or have any?
Yes, we have been and received resolutions in support of this from the city of Arcata, the city of Blue Lake, the city of, there's three cities, Trinidad, the community service districts in Manila and in Willow Creek. And we're still working on other resolutions with other municipalities.
Thank you. All right. So if we don't have any questions, I'll go ahead and open it up for public comment.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Come on up. Come on up.
I'd like to thank Catherine Donahue for a very good synopsis of what single payer is about. My name is Corinne Fregone. I'm a family physician, recently retired, and I've been working in Humboldt County for over 30 years. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council members, for having us. I want to add that Long Beach, LA, San Francisco, Berkeley, there's a lot of municipalities in the state of California that have passed similar resolutions in support of AB 1400 and HR 1976, which are wonderful bills. They have covered so many aspects of how to provide high-quality healthcare that's universally accessible and equitably accessible to everyone in California. I want to talk about my, my experience as a physician and as a patient. I was diagnosed years ago, I, I've been working on this for 30 years, since 1989, so never mind how many years that is. But I got diagnosed with an illness. And the first thought that went through my head was, how am I going to pay for this? And that is the first thought that goes through many of my patients' brains as I tell them some bad diagnosis. It shouldn't be that way. It affects our immune system. It affects our ability to heal from bad illnesses. I want to say we have a very good system in this country. We have some of the best treatments in the world. People come from all over the world, but it's not accessible. So we're losing a lot of money. I've had patients who I've performed procedures on who would not, could not get treatment till they were eligible for Medicare. And by the time they got Medicare, they had advanced cancer. It was too late. I'm dealing with, at one point I wanted to get an MRI for a patient of mine for a shoulder. And the three major hospitals in this area all had different prices. There's no accountability. Under single payer, we would have one financial fund that could oversee how the monies are distributed. The decisions made for healthcare would be based on community needs, not trying to take over other practices or other hospitals and become bigger and better so that they can charge more to insurance companies to make even more money. The whole question of making money gets writ, is out of the equation. I also had a funny experience when I worked at one place where I, I was salaried and I, a bill was sent in my name. It went, it came back, it was rejected by the insurance company because their whole purpose is to reject. Our purpose is to provide. And then it went back and forth, back and forth. And finally, the CEO came down with a check written to me for one penny, one penny for my services. That is what's going on, and it's just outrageous. And I want to also add that in terms of business for Eureka, for Humboldt, it would have a much better opportunity to thrive because people could work where they wanted to work and therefore be more productive as opposed to staying because they needed insurance. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do we have anybody else? Okay. Come on up.
Single payer healthcare is a no-brainer. And I just hope that you boldly and bravely and unanimously loudly support a resolution in favor of this, especially for our Northern California rural Humboldt County area. And as Dr. Fregone said, people who live here and people who want to work here, if we had single payer healthcare, we would not have the health disparity and the healthcare disparity that currently exists because of the private insurance industry. So go for it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else in council chambers? Okay. If we don't have anybody else in council chambers, do we have anybody on Zoom who would like to speak?
Yes, I believe Winchell has his unmuted. So I think he was ready. And we also have Latonya and Patty with their hands up.
All righty, we'll start with you, Winchell.
Great. Hello. Good evening. My name is Winchell Dillonbeck, and I'm a member of Healthcare for All Humboldt. The polls show that 69% of Californians support single payer healthcare. Both the California Guaranteed Healthcare Act, Calcare, and the federal improved Medicare for All bill would establish statewide or nationwide comprehensive, universal, single payer healthcare with a cost control system for the benefit of all residents of the state and specifically for the residents of Eureka. Both the state and federal legislation would guarantee that all residents of Eureka would be fully covered for healthcare without copays, deductibles or other out-of-pocket costs and would save the taxpayer dollars now spent on premiums that often provide inadequate health insurance coverage for government employees and would save the city of Eureka the cost burden of a health insurance provision. The ever-increasing costs of healthcare, which are further elevated due to the pandemic, is challenging our already strapped state and municipal budgets. Both legislative acts would slash bureaucracy, protect the doctor-patient relationship, and assure patients a free choice of doctors. While it's important for the council to understand the basic concepts of single payer healthcare system, it is most important to understand that single payer healthcare would reduce the cost burden of healthcare to the city of Eureka and would free up money that could be. and would free up money that could be utilized for important services to the residents of Eureka. Calcare and the Improved Medicare for All Act calls upon our state and national legislators to work toward their immediate enactment. I urge you to pass the resolution in support of single payer bills for healthcare reform. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you want to call him, Hem? Do you want me to? Okay, thanks.
Latonya Jacob?
Hi, thank you for allowing me to speak again. And this will also be in the email that I submit with my written comments. But I just want to make sure that I'm clear on what it is I'm hearing. As far as this, uh, single payer health care system, um, I, I need to understand how come you guys are not part of the ACA Affordable Care Act? Is it not available to people in Humboldt County? That's what I want to know. As far as I know, that's in fact, right? And if that's the case, is this part of that? It's just like, I, I'm just trying to understand what's happening. Can someone help me, enlighten me? And as far as the committee that is making the decisions on this, I forget, Mrs. Catherine Donahue, is it possible that you contact me that, so that I can, is it, is it open for people to, to join the committee? And to sit and listen and learn and get feed, get feedback and hear just what's being, you know, how you guys are coming up with what you're coming up with? So that will help me as a payroll professional and HR professional and trainer to better be prepared to tell people and like, you know, what's going on. Because it seems like we're reinventing the wheel. This has already been, I thought, decided. But it looks like we'd like roll back and history, you know, just, are we, just, I mean, did we lose something? So that, maybe that will help us to alleviate things such as, um, I mean duplication, you know, reinventing the wheel. Help me to, is this like a history lesson for us or something? So, thank you very much.
So, just so you know, Latonya, it's not reinventing the wheel. It's building a whole new sort of vehicle, I think. So it's, it, it's completely separate from ACA. From the, okay? And so maybe you can follow up with the groups that are working on this. Today, we're just passing a resolution. We don't have any authority to make these decisions. We're just discussing whether or not we want to tell our representatives that this is something we want them to do. So we won't be able to change anything. And now I'm going to go on to the next.
Our next speaker is Patty Harvey.
Hi, I'm Patty Harvey, and thank you so much, Mayor and City Council, for having us here. I'm with, again, Healthcare for All and Physicians for National Health Program in Humboldt. And Latonya, that's a very good question. I'm really glad you asked that question because so many people are confused about what single payer is. And let me, allow me just to simplify it for you very briefly. Um, we all know what Medicare is. I think most people understand what Medicare is. What we are advocating with these bills is improved Medicare. And by improving it, we don't mean that in a generic sense. We mean really improving it. In other words, including vision, dental, hearing, long-term care, uh, mental health, which has been talked about a lot tonight already, and also getting rid of the Medigap that people pay when they buy Medicare. They have to pay the extra twenty percent as a cost sharing. And we want to get rid of all cost sharing because it obviates people that don't have as much money. It, it kicks them out. And so we definitely want Medicare for all, for everyone, regardless of race, ethnicity, background, marital or job status, or income, anything that you can think of, that every single living being would have equal access to affordable, high-quality healthcare. And yes, it's correct. It has nothing to do with the ACA. ACA was written by insurance companies. And we mostly find that insurance companies are not helpful in providing healthcare. They are only helpful in costing us money. So that's where we are going with Medicare for All, Improved Medicare for All. And I was planning to speak just briefly, although what I was going to say has been covered by the previous speakers pretty much. But I just want to reemphasize how, even though this is, these bills, one is for California, one is in Congress for the entire nation, we don't care which one comes first. We just want to see it happen either for California, which can eminently afford it, or for the entire nation. That's how it started in Canada in one province. And then the other provinces looked over their shoulder and saw what, how beneficial that was in saving money and saving lives. And they all demanded the same thing. And we think that's what will happen if California becomes the first state in the Union to pass AB 1400. And what I wanted to emphasize, even though these are statewide and nationwide, that they intimately affect the residents of Eureka. And they would intimately benefit those residences, those residents, and all businesses that provide healthcare and pay for healthcare for their employees, as well as the city government itself, which Mr. Dillonbeck made a good point about.
That's the three minutes, so.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Our next speaker is Eileen McGee.
Hi, I'm a Eureka resident. Um, and I just want to encourage you to support this resolution. I feel like it's time for us to align with other communities that are working to provide healthcare for all of their constituents, for all the reasons that Catherine and Corinne and Patty and Winchell just stated. I think it, it would be really interesting to have our guest from Eureka's sister city in Japan share information about their healthcare system with us tonight. But I know we don't have time for that. But anyway, I just want you to know that a huge majority of people want our policymakers to respond to our needs. And I believe that this council gets it. So please, take a stand tonight and support this. Thanks.
Thank you very much.
Our next speaker is Colin Fisk.
Hi, good evening. I just wanted to express my support for this personally. And I think everyone else has done a really good job of laying out the reasons for it, so I won't belabor the point, but I encourage you to pass the resolution. Thanks.
Thank you very much. I, I, okay, so Patty, I'll give you a minute to, to wrap up, only because you spent some time helping us address some questions, but.
Thank you so much.
Very quick.
Thank you. I just quickly wanted to add, if anyone is interested in that, in that, addressing Latonya again for joining us, our group, we are HCA, PNHP Humboldt. And you can reach us through our, by email, Or you can find out more information on websites. Healthcareforall.org is one. And PNHP.org is the other website for the Physicians for National Health Program. And if you want to contact us, we would be happy to make you, give you access to our meetings. And you don't have to even join. You can just come and listen in if you like. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. That was a nice way to wrap that up, so people can follow up.
I, I want to give you my email.
Okay, thank you. We're good. Um, now we are going to bring you back to council for comments or motion. Councilmember Brighell.
So I'm really thankful that we are looking at this. A couple of the things that really spoke to me as I was reading the information were that three million Californians have no insurance. Millions are underserved. And we're still in a pandemic. We're still in a pandemic, and we're getting all these people without treatment. Um, the other thing was that this would place hand, healthcare in the hands of doctors and patients rather than the insurance companies and healthcare boardrooms. And most importantly, and this one really speaks to me, as many of you know, my daughter was in a very bad accident a couple of years ago. It was very scary. And it was a lot of money. And, um, and I have insurance. And still, it was a lot of money. And just recently, she went down for another surgery, um, and it was almost $4,000. And we were on the fence. How are we going to pay for this? Because we didn't have, we didn't have our, um, we hadn't met our deductible yet. And they wanted their full payment before we could do that. And we were able to pool money with our family and to borrow money to do that. Um, but it was a real struggle, you know? And my kids come first, and so we'll do whatever it takes. But that, this really speaks to me, is that people, there are people who have healthcare, but they delay services because they can't afford the deductibles or the co-pays. And I have personally had experience with that. And I'm going to tell you, it's a horrible space to be in. And that's just one of the many reasons that I support this. I've supported this for years now, or many years now. And so with that, I'd like to make a motion to them. We can make some comments. But I move that we adopt a resolution of the City Council in support of single payer bills for healthcare reform.
Can I get a second? Can I get a second? Okay, Councilmember Maltin. Now we'll bring it out for discussion. Councilmember Arroyo, then Castellano.
I don't have any questions or concerns, but I did want to just make a friendly recommendation. Um, there's a couple of references to Blue Lake, and I think this was probably just adopted, borrowed from one that was presented to Blue Lake. I totally support the people of Blue Lake also doing this, but it sounds like they already did. So just with those minor edits, if the maker of the motion and the second are amenable, that's all.
Does it already been changed?
Oh, okay. Sorry, it was just in our agenda that way. So, yep, that's it.
All right, Councilmember Castellano.
Um, I just want to express appreciation for all of the doctors and citizenry that came forward in support of this. Um, it, it is really important. I, myself, you know, didn't have healthcare for fifteen years. And so my solution was just to not go to the doctor. You know, that, that was like what I did. And I was very fortunate that I didn't need, you know, that I was okay, you know? But that's, you know, if something had happened, I would have really been in trouble. And, you know, I, you really see people who've gone into debt over healthcare, and then they have this burden they have to carry. And that's not okay for anyone. You know, and then people who have healthcare who have to, you know, argue on the phone with insurance companies to get them to pay for things, you know, that you're already paying them for this service. So, um, yeah, just thank you. I'm eager to support this. And hopefully, we can, we can move this forward on a state and national level.
I'll just make a comment, too, that when my husband and I owned a business, when you own your own business, it's very hard to get healthcare. So, um, when we didn't, and he got a job and got insurance, went to the doctor, the doctor said, wow, we should have you in a room with other medical students wondering why you're alive. Because he had, he had like crazy high blood pressure, and he had, it's all better now. Thankfully, medicine is good stuff. But, uh, yeah, we went without, too.
Mayor, I believe Councilmember Bauer would like to say something as well.
Thank you, and then I'll get back to Maltin. Uh, Councilmember Bauer.
Yeah, thanks. I, um, would say the same thing as, as you all. I, uh, I was, I've always had insurance. I've been fortunate working for the state. And I had a pretty significant, you know, healthcare issue that costs probably half a million dollars that if I hadn't had health insurance, you know, I'd be bankrupt. Um, so I, I'll just say that I wish we could do more than a resolution, you know? But, you know, this is a good start. And, you know, I think, you know, being supportive of something like this is, is easy. And I hope we see something change after thirty years, you know, that we can finally get this moving through the state and at the federal level, too. So, thanks.
All right, Councilmember Maltin.
I agree, I wish we could do more. I have been, I also have a story to tell. I've been that person in the ER asking how much something was going to cost. Don't worry about that now. Don't worry about that now. And when you can't afford it, you can't afford it. And if it's the difference between getting a medical procedure and like literally keeping housing, you know, that's just a decision we shouldn't be making in the wealthiest country in the world. I really do wish that we could do more.
All right, well, we have a motion, and we have a second. And I think everybody's had a chance to discuss, so why don't we all vote?
Councilmember Bauer?
Aye.
Unanimous yes vote, motion carries.
Can I just, yes, one more thing?
I just wanted to thank you, Catherine, for coming and bringing this forward. It's, it's such an important, important thing. And I'm looking forward to it moving forward higher up as well.
Thank you. Uh, we are going to move on to item K2, which is the ranked choice voting implementation. And for that, we're going to turn to our city attorney, Bob Black.
Thank you, Mayor. This item arises because the voters of the city of Eureka adopted Measure C on the November 2020 ballot. Uh, that calls, Measure C itself calls for your council to adopt an ordinance implementing ranked choice voting. Uh, this is the ordinance before you that I am suggesting meets the requirements of that ballot measure and charter provision. Um, this has been discussed with the elections officials of the county with, who, um, whose cooperation will be required to make this work. Uh, we are assured that the hardware and software that the county will be deploying for the 2022 election, uh, and ideally, and certainly the 2024 election will be able to accommodate ranked choice voting. Uh, there is a question, but it's a small one, I think, as to whether we'll be able to actually do the implementation of RCV for 2022. I think it will happen. Um, but we'll need to work closely with county election officials, um, you know, to, to try to assure that. And I'm, I'm prepared to respond to questions about this ordinance. Um, it is modeled after the city of, I'm trying to remember. Uh, there's a, a city in the Bay Area that adopted ranked choice voting, and their ordinance is list, is one of the ones carried by Fair Vote, which is an advocacy organization for ranked choice voting. Uh, I've made quite a few modifications and tweaks to it. I think it's the city of Pleasanton. So, here we are. Ours, ours will be unique and perhaps in and of itself become a model.
All right, Councilmember Castellano.
Um, thank you. And I, I just have a quick question. It's something I asked you earlier, City Attorney Black. And that is, in section thirty-seven point twenty-three, the tabulation section, uh, item, part D of that, where it talks about in the final round, the candidate who receives the majority of votes from the continuing ballots is the winner. If two candidates in the final round are tied, the winner of those two will be chosen by lot. And the, the question I asked you is, would it be possible to defer at that point to the original, to the candidate who originally had the highest number of votes? Um, I guess, I guess I won't get into commentary. And so I'm just curious if you could say more about that.
Yes, so the, the concept of choosing the winner by lot is drawn from the state election law. And it doesn't happen very often, but it does happen that people have to go with drawing straws or a roll of the dice, you know, some, some method of random choice. It would be, in my opinion, possible to import into the ranked choice voting idea that if there's a tie, we revert back to the first round of balloting, and the two, the one of the two tied candidates that got the most votes in that first round would then be selected in the face of a tie. So, I don't know of any reason we couldn't write that into the ordinance. So, I don't know of any reason we couldn't write that into the ordinance. Functionally, if the motion to introduce this bill tonight contained a reference to that, I could simply draft that, and upon adoption, I'd bring that back to you for your final consideration.
All right, any other questions? If not, I will open it up to public comment. Is there anybody here who'd like to speak on this item? Nobody? All right, so Latonya.
Hi, um, I just, my question is to the attorney, Attorney Black. I just wanted to know about this, um, um, you, you guys mentioned 37.23 ranked choice. Um, is, is this, um, does the city of Eureka get, um, federal or military, um, participation? Or people from the military, you know, you get contracts from military? You get awarded, you know, I mean, any, you know, I'm just wondering if you're getting funding or dealing, doing anything within the military here in the city of Eureka, or instead of Humboldt County? Anything, any, 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 anything? I just want to know if that's the case. That just, that would help me understand better what's happening here. Okay, thanks.
Okay, so this doesn't have anything to do with that at all. This is simply about how we vote. That's it. Caroline.
Hi, Caroline Griffith, resident of Eureka. Um, I just want to say I'm very excited to see this coming to fruition, and I really appreciate um, the work that the council before did to get this on the ballot, um, and the advocacy that certain council members um, did to get it passed. Um, this is going to be exciting to see this implemented, and hopefully it will be able to be implemented in 2022. I know I've done a little bit of research um, into places that do hand counting of ranked choice voting ballots. Uh, there are a few cities that's the only way that they've ever done it, such as Cambridge, Massachusetts. But there is one in Minnesota that recently did their first ranked choice voting election. Uh, they're a comparable size to Eureka, and it took them three days to count their ballots. Uh, hopefully it doesn't come to that, and we have the um, software to do it. And in terms of the question of drawing lots, um, I, I appreciate that um, question, Councilmember Castellano, and um, I think that going back to, I mean, it'd be interesting to see if going back to the original um, first count of who got the most votes, um, if that actually helped people to feel more comfortable with the, um, with the whole process. Though, it's, would be very, very rare, I think, that that would actually happen. So, but mostly, just thank you for going through this process, council. I really appreciate it, and really, and I'm excited to use ranked choice voting, hopefully in 2022, and at the very least in 2024.
Thank you so much. Do we have any other comments? I don't see any. All right, then I will bring it back to council for a motion or discussion.
Well, I move we waive reading, read by title only, and introduce bill number 1008 TACCS. I said tac like you. Adding sections 37.20, 37.21, 37.22, and 37.23 ranked choice voting to chapter 36, 37, elections title three with the amendment, uh, to revert back to most votes if in fact item D in 37.23, uh, does express itself.
I'll second that.
Thank you very much. So Councilmember Roy, I'm seconded. Any just further discussion on this item?
Is, yes, I do.
Okay.
Uh, is there any way to assist with expediting the implementation, or is that completely out of our hands?
We need a second. Oh, we have a second? What, what was?
Do we have a second?
It was me.
Natalie.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry.
I thought, I thought our uh, city elections official Powell was going to answer that question. I think, uh, let me just say this, the county elections administrators have been very cooperative, and uh, uh, obviously, uh, we, uh, including uh, city elections official Powell have been cooperative on our end. We'll do everything we can, and I'm, I'm personally quite optimistic that we're going to be able to do this for 2022. It's just that I needed to put that caveat out there because, um, just in case, there's a glitch in the run-up to it. Um, there is, city, city elections official Powell may not even want to hear me say this, but there is an option to do a hand count, and uh, it would be on a word-by-word basis, except for the mayor, uh, the mayorship, so.
That, I, I think on that, my only concern is that we get, or we train, we're not set up to do, um, an election, you know, to issue the ballots and those kind of things. So, the county elections office would be the one doing the hand count, and they would have to be agreeable to that. Um, but you know, wouldn't it be myself performing that duty as we transfer our election over to them? We consolidate with them, and um, so that, the, I think we will know, they were going to have a final meeting with their vendor into November, December, and we will know, um, right around the first of the year, if the, I, the name of the software is Heart Elections, I believe. And um, they will, should have a final to us, because we want to start educating the public and working with, you know, the local group who've brought this forward to educate the public on ranked choice voting, and we want to make sure we have a, uh, enough time to, you know, roll out that education, so.
Great, thank you. So, we would, we would work with them to determine if that were not, if Heart implementation, if the new voting system implementation is not able to happen in time, then we would be talking with the county about whether the fallback option of hand counting was a possibility for this upcoming election year, November 2022. Okay, great. Well, I would personally like to see us ask for that if they think that for some reason they can't implement. Um, and I know that's a big ask, but I don't think it's um, unreasonable for a community of our size to consider as an option.
Right, there would be some cost to that too, that council would have to provide direction on.
All right, motion and second, any further discussion on this item? If not, let's go ahead, oh, okay, Councilmember Bauer, I don't see you raising your hand. So, let's go ahead and vote. Councilmember Bauer?
Aye.
Unanimous yes vote, motion carries. Is there a reason the light's off in the hallway?
Excuse me, miss, I've got a question about this. I'm just trying to make the connection here between what you're saying, with this, this topic about, um, um, uh, ranked choice voting, and then you talk about, um, you go back to the, the ward, um.
Latonya, I'm, I'm afraid this isn't the time for this discussion. It's, that's a big discussion that we probably should have. Outside of the meeting? Okay. We're addressing the light thing. Thank you. Yeah, I think the custodian just wants to go home and turn them off. Yeah, that's a good, I, no, that's, that's a good thing. So we're going to move on to item K3, which is the regulation of storage and handling of coal on city-owned and trust properties. Um, and that again is going to be City Attorney Bob Black.
Thank you, Mayor. This um, ordinance is prepared at council's direction that we um, be concerned with and regulate the storage and handling of coal on city-owned and city-trust properties. Um, this is a little different from the effort of some other communities to regulate coal in the sense that we're not, uh, amending the zoning ordinance, but we are, uh, by ordinance, regulating the use of property that the city owns, the citizens of Eureka own, and they have entrusted these properties to you as their city council, uh, to dictate how those properties shall be used. Um, and that's pretty much it. This ordinance, uh, for a variety of stated reasons, uh, prohibits the storage and handling of coal and pet coke on any property owned or held in public trust by the city of Eureka. And prohibits that there are certain exemptions for the use of small amounts of coal. Um, it's perhaps hard to imagine that these non-commercial uses would take place on city property anyway, but if they were to do that, this ordinance would um, provide an exemption and keep us from coming into conflict with non-commercial uses that might be for craft or other purposes.
All right, does anybody have questions on the council? Councilmember Arroyo.
I'm just thinking about that small, small amounts of coal or coke, um, if we're starting to create an exemption, I just, it just occurred to me that perhaps we should define small amount in the definitions. Um, could you think, uh, um, do you have any sense of what a small amount could be? Um, I don't want to necessarily delay this to concern ourselves with that, but.
Yeah, so I would say, um, you know, no more than 25 pounds in a given 24-hour period. I think you'd have to define both an amount and a period of time in which it would be put to use.
Gotcha.
Something like that.
I think something like that, yeah, makes sense to me. I was just, you know, lest we have a city blacksmithing class on public property.
Exactly.
It's, it's the blacksmithing community that's concerned about this particular aspect. So, um, that's probably getting way into the weeds, but thank you for helping with that.
So we could add that to the definitions as you suggested.
And any other council or questions from council? Seeing none, I will open it up to public comment. Okay, Latonya. You're muted, Latonya.
Thank you for unmuting me. I just, I heard some, some things, and I, um, this, first of all, please make note that there's a property, I don't know if it's city-owned or not, on the corner of 9th Street and 8th Street. It's a building, and we're, this is, this is, I don't know if this is where you're going with it, I'm just trying to make the connection between what my comments were from previous versus what you're saying here. Housing, I mean, way to utilize government-owned buildings, or foreclosed buildings, which could be government-owned, one, two. So, is that one of those things? That building there, if anyone can recall? And if so?
This is not about housing, it's, this is about the train. Um, this is about property that the city owns that we want to not have coal on anywhere, on city-owned property.
I, I, I know, you mentioned those things, but you see, this is something, is this is, this is, is that a property that's owned by the city or the government?
No.
No?
Nope.
Is it privately owned?
I think.
Oh.
If it's the property you're talking, I, I'm thinking of.
9th Street and 8th Street. It's a big building.
Yeah.
The city doesn't own any property at 9th and 8th. That is privately owned.
It was just sold?
So, Latonya, we're, we're speaking about this specific topic, and that's not this topic right now, so I'm going to go ahead and move on to the council.
Is that, is that prop, is that property coal and petroleum heated?
No, thank you. Colin Fisk.
Thanks, yeah, I just wanted to express my um, appreciation to the council and uh, the city attorney and the city staff for pursuing this proactively and um, you know, looking at um, what's been done and all the uh, you know, legal strategies that are necessary to um, to address proactively the threat of coal being uh, exported through or stored in Eureka. So, uh, thank you, I really support this, and uh, on behalf of the Coalition for Responsible Transportation Priorities, I encourage you to move forward.
Thank you very much. I do not see any other comments at this time, so I'll bring it back. Do we have somebody in the audience would like to come up? Come on up.
Again, my name's Joanne McGary McGreta, and um, I came here, uh, this is one of the issues I came to hear about and learn about and speak about. And I spoke earlier about the climate action plan that our county is reviewing and has in draft form, and when we're talking about fossil fuels and greenhouse gas emissions, anything to do with um, storing some of those fossil fuels that we have no business having in our county, um, I think this is an ordinance, again, that is very important to be strongly advocating for no, um, no storage of coal from elsewhere coming into Humboldt County and being kept here for any purposes, uh, for our climate future. So, I just would like to say, go for it and keep coal out. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else in council chambers who'd like to speak to this?
I always have to put this down. Thank you, Mayor, Mayor Seaman and council members. My name is Karen Underwood. I'm uh, representing the Humboldt Trail Council here tonight, and um, the council, um, we sponsor the volunteer trail steward program and have four groups along the Eureka Waterfront Trail working, as well as many other areas in the county. And we're strong advocates for the Bay Trail, and by extension, the Great Redwood Trail. So you can imagine, I'm here definitely encouraging you to pass this ordinance, and we are in total support of this ordinance. Coal dust and diesel fuel is not going to help our citizens or our environment breathing that, and having it here on city property would really affect the quality of life here. We understand there are some adjustments that could be made regarding one of the sentences with the global, the one that has global warming in it. Global warming, while an incredibly important issue, is outside the jurisdiction of the city, or any city, and it's our understanding that it would be better in the long run to have a narrow focus with this ordinance in, um, so that it could withstand future litigation. And so just would encourage you maybe to remove that one sentence. I want to thank you also, as Colin did, for being proactive on this and, and moving ahead to get this um, ordinance passed, um, and thank you very much for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you.
Hi again, Catherine Donahue. I want to thank the council for being proactive on this uh, topic, um, speaking from a health perspective. The air we breathe here in Humboldt County is lovely, coming from the ocean, nice salt air. I don't want to add coal dust to that, I don't want to breathe it, and I really appreciate your proactive stance on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, and it looks like we have somebody on Zoom.
I have a member dial.
Oh, I'm sorry, Scott. Okay, when we bring it back, I'll uh, bring it straight to you. I was, I really can't see, it's very small from here. Um, all righty, so we'll bring it back to council, and we'll start with Councilmember Bauer.
Yeah, thank you. I, I just want to thank the community, uh, I don't think I've ever received that many emails in support of this ordinance. Um, and, you know, again, I think, wish we could, excuse me, wish we could do more. I can't believe this is even an issue that we're, we're facing, that we would have to be concerned about burning coal, um, period, you know, given the state of our, of our climate. And um, I, I appreciate the comment about global warming, um, but I think, I'm, I'm satisfied, and I look forward to hearing what you all think about the ordinance. I think it's worth addressing. I think everything in here is, is real and um, important to state, and you know, nobody welcomes litigation, obviously, um, but I think what we're doing is right, and um, we're doing what we have to do to protect Humboldt County and the city of Eureka and the planet. So, I look forward to some passing this, and. And I'd like to make the motion, if I can, actually, to waifull reading, read by title only, and introduce bill number 1007-CS, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Eureka, adding sections 94.60 through 94.67 of chapter 94 of the Eureka Municipal Code regarding prohibition of the storage and handling of coal and petroleum coke on city-owned property.
All right.
Thank you.
Do we have a second on that?
One second.
Thank you, Councilmember Royo. Do we have any further discussion?
May I, Madam Mayor, ask if the intent is to include the definition suggested by Councilmember Royo?
I was gonna suggest that. I was gonna ask if you would consider a friendly amendment of the definition of small amount being less than 25 pound used over 24-hour period or being there on a 24-hour period.
Yes, I do. That's fine.
All right, so we have a motion and a second, and any further discussion to that? Councilmember Bergel.
I just, I too can't believe that we're actually having to, to look at this, the ridiculousness of it astounds me. Oh, my mic's not on. I'm sorry. So I too am just, I can't believe that we're having to look at this, and it's just, to me, it seems ridiculous, but I'm grateful that we are looking at it and that we are going to hopefully make a change. But the one thing that I wanted to talk about, and I'm so thankful, I love our community because we did, we got, you know, so many emails. Yesterday, at last count, it was like nine o'clock or eight o'clock, it was like 35, and then it just kept increasing all day. And I really appreciate the engagement from the community and people paying attention to what's happening, so, thank you. I support this.
Councilmember Moulton?
I just wanted to thank the council members who brought this up and the staff for doing all of this work as a coastal city. And as a coastal city, this is, this is an act of self-defense, I think. Self-preservation.
All right. Councilmember Castellano?
Sure. Yeah, I just, I appreciate that we're moving forward on this. I think it's really critical that those of us, you know, who have any capacity to do what we can to, you know, care for the well-being of our communities do so, so, and this is part of it, is making sure that we're thinking about the future and really putting forward policies that are mindful of the consequences that humans have on the world around us.
Councilmember Royo?
I was just thinking about that comment related to climate change and what we can and can't control, and I honestly do feel fairly content, maybe I'm missing the section where specifically that was mentioned. I didn't, I looked through and I see section E, the, in the whereas section, the first section of declarations, I see E that talks about significant greenhouse gases contributing to climate change. Oh, this is my favorite typo I've ever seen, seal level rise, which is adorable. I hope we have more seals. I just saw that. Seal level rise notwithstanding, it does, I think, make a point that we're a coastal city and that's why we're concerned about the associated impacts of climate change. So I realize we can't control anything outside of our jurisdiction, but I personally feel content with the way it's expressed there because it's making a point that it's related to our city's interests and concerns. So I, and looking through the rest of it, I don't think that this is saying that we can impact something that we can't impact. This is really, I appreciate staff's effort to center this around city property and what we can control, so, and the reasons, the whereas is, I think, our declarations as to why we care about this. So I personally feel content with it. I just, I hope we get more seals, too. But, anyway, yeah, thank you, staff, for kind of taking that feedback from the first version and really incorporating it effectively, and I feel ready to vote.
All right. Is everybody ready to vote? Let's do it. Councilmember Bauer?
Aye.
Unanimous yes vote, motion carries. All right, and it's eight o'clock, so we'll take a short break, about five minutes. We don't have a lot after this, and see you guys back in a few. Next to your computer. Look at that. Let's bring it back to, the meeting back to session, and our next item is a report and action item on the Humboldt Transit Authority MOU.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, Mayor and council. This item here is a memorandum of understanding between the Humboldt Transit Authority and the city of Eureka for the establishment of an intermodal transit center on a city-owned property. This came about because of a grant that Humboldt Transit Authority has, is about to pursue. The grant is for $28 million. It includes the process of beginning to go carbon-free for Humboldt Transit Authority. It would take 10 of their 30 buses and turn them into hydrogen-fueled buses. It would also allow for the construction and installation of hydrogen-fueling facilities. Those hydrogen-fueling facilities would also be made available to the public and other agencies like the city of Eureka in the future if we were to go in this route. And then it will also create funding for an intermodal transit center. The property that we're looking at potentially doing this development on is the parking lots that are behind Losco's Brewery on Third, in between Third and Fourth Street and G and H Streets. There's two parking lots there. The city is looking at this MOU as an opportunity to assist with our mass transit, of course, but also to help them going carbon-free. And we're also, at the beginning stages of this, we're looking at also making this into a mixed-use development. We're looking at other partners to come into this project and potentially turn this into a larger project that would include workforce housing and affordable housing on this property. And the first floor would be this intermodal transit facility and office space and potentially some retail space. This mixed-use development would be not only help with housing, but also help with transportation capabilities down in our Old Town facility, down in our Old Town area. Assistant City Manager Powell, could you put up the diagram? So I have a very preliminary diagram of what this would look like. As you can see on the aerial there that is up on the screen, along 8th Street in the southbound far western, west lane, that would be shut down and that would be used for the entrance and exiting of Humboldt. The alley would serve as facilities for Amtrak, Greyhound, Uber, those other types of modes of transportation. And then there would be bike-share facilities as well as scooters and the like around there. And obviously, this is just showing where the transit facilities would be. And so this MOU is just establishing a partnership between the city and Humboldt Transit Authority, that this is something that we'd like to pursue, and we're looking for council to approve the pursuit of, of this intermodal transit center here. And we will likely be back in the future with any other developments that should come up as it relates to housing or other components of this project. Greg Pratt with the, the general manager of Humboldt Transit Authority is here in the audience. I only brought him in case I really hacked something up, but if you guys have any questions, I'm here to answer those questions. And with that, we're recommending that council adopt this memorandum of understanding with Humboldt Transit Authority.
Well, I see he hasn't moved up in the seats, which is what you tend to do if you're really screwing it up, you get a little closer and a little closer, so maybe that's a good sign. Does anybody have questions about this item? Councilmember Castellano?
What's the, you know, I realize this is a huge and exciting project, what's the timeline for, for us, you know, kind of looking at this?
So the reason why this MOU is in front of council right now is because I believe that the grant deadline is in December, and they need to submit something in December, and they're looking to have something that makes the grant more competitive. As far as timeline for the overall project, I think that that's, it's going to be difficult to determine, but it depends if it gets into a multi-use development, which I think is likely, I think that we could look at potentially breaking ground as early as 2024, I would guess, with the overall project including, you know, housing as well as a transit center as well.
Councilmember Royo?
I would love to hear from, from Greg Pratt, just about, if you could just provide a little bit of context for the, the efforts and studies so far that have gone into the kind of hydrogen and some of the other transitions we're making, and then I know, also know that you've been coordinating with a lot of transportation agencies around the region. So like, how does this fit into that vision? If you could share it with our council, because I know I've heard it. I don't think everyone has heard it.
I'll do my best here. Good evening, Mayor and council. My name's Greg Pratt, I'm the general manager at Humboldt Transit Authority, so we'll get that out of the way. In 2030, we will not be able to purchase any more diesel buses, and so at a cost of, it doesn't matter if it's electric or if it's hydrogen, the price tag is $1 million per bus. So we have $30 million worth of rolling stock to replace. So this is a start to that. There's several different grants coming available to reduce greenhouse gases. The one we're going after is specifically for that, reducing vehicle miles traveled. We've been coordinating with other Northern California agencies in the state who looked at both electric and hydrogen, and it's become evident that electric doesn't have the range for us. It has a, you know, 120-mile range, whereas our routes are 300 to 400 miles. And so it's a clear choice for all of us here, really, in the North State, to go to hydrogen so we can make it over these long, these long distances that we all travel here. So there's a group of us that are, you know, we're sort of banding together, working with hydrogen producers just to try to work out a network of fueling stations across the North State. So that's kind of a little bit of how this came to be. And I just want to mention, too, that the proposed location that Miles was talking about, we've been having our transfers there for over 40 years now. So it's an ideal location, the buses, the flow is great for us there, and we have the opportunity to bring in Amtrak and Greyhound and the dial ride and a lot of different, kind of different modes, so people can get off the bus no matter where they come in from and be able to maybe hop on a bike, maybe a zipcar, travel around, you know, downtown. So that's kind of the short version of, of the project.
Thank you very much. And as the Councilmember Bauer has a question.
Well, I was just gonna add to that. From our traffic engineering's perspective, the exact things that Greg is talking about is definitely true for this type of facility, for our flow of traffic and for the facilities that we have on the streets there.
Thank you. Councilmember Bauer?
Maybe my question's silly, but I'm just wondering about hydrogen power in general, or I hear crazy things like fossil fuel companies want to produce hydrogen from fossil fuel, and why couldn't, you know, I guess the scale of production probably doesn't, isn't conducive to Humboldt, you know, producing its own, but I don't know if anybody can answer that question, if we could produce our own hydrogen, you know, for our own transportation systems.
That's definitely not a question for me, Councilmember Bauer, but I do know that RCEA's been heavily involved in the Schatz Energy Lab and this project. I haven't, I'm no expert in the field and don't know whether or not fossil fuels would be, I have a hard time believing that, because if that, well, I wouldn't say I have a hard time believing that, but the whole intent of this is to go carbon-free. And hydrogen from everything we've heard from RCEA is the way to go, not only from an environmental standpoint, but also from a practicality standpoint for HTA because of the distances that they travel.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that we're, we're getting the right hydrogen. I mean, I'm on the RCA DA board, and we haven't discussed it as much, but I hope that's, that's the case, that maybe, maybe we could produce it locally off of excess wind or something. Thanks.
I saw the way Miles sat up when he asked the question, and I was like, ooh, he's got a good answer, and then he was just like, I don't know.
That was my scared sit-up.
You don't have to know everything, you only have to know 98% of the things we ask. Any other Councilmember Bergel?
It may not be relevant, actually, but I was just gonna ask, we heard a lot tonight about extended hours on the bus, and I was just curious if you might be able to, with this project, would that be something that we feel like would be happening?
Yeah, as things open back up, we're starting to put on more service, so over the next three months, we're planning on running later at night, but yeah, it's in the works.
Thank you. All right, I think we have all of our questions. Do we have any public comment?
Hello again, this is Joanne McGary-McGretta, and I came here on this topic as well. I think transit hubs are so necessary and important as we move into the future of people sharing vehicles to travel from place to place. I had the good fortune, I guess, of waiting overnight in a Greyhound station in San Francisco, their new transit hub downtown, I don't know if any of you have seen it, but it's very spacious and you kind of know what is what, and, you know, it's really, the flow is really, really good. So I just looked at this map here and the location, and I, again, live in Arcata, and their current transit hub is very insufficient, and buses making sharp turns and this and that. And I just want to make sure that the space that is being talked about is really, really adequate. It's a good central location, I agree, but I just want to make sure it's really, really adequate for the size of vehicles that will be turning corners and moving through and that it's, there's not going to be a lot of congestion, and we're talking about traffic safety, too. So I'm just curious about the location and if everybody feels that it's big enough to handle a lot of that hub activity. So that's my question.
Thank you. And then on, on Zoom, we have Latonya.
My question is for Greg Pratt, is he there? Is he coming back?
You could ask your question, and then when we come back, maybe we'll ask it for you, too.
Yeah, just want to first start off by saying thank you very much for the implementation of the universal bus passes. I think that's working well, and I just want to know how long are you going to have that available? And then, secondly, the stops, please bring back the stops that's been taken away. We can't, we can't use, we can't lose any more stops, okay? We need, we need all the stops that's there, and bring back the ones that you took away. And we need more, because there's, there's such a distance in between stops. And I know there's a lot of people who are healthy conscious, you could be healthy conscious, but yeah, you still need those stops, because there's a, let's see, the, going southbound, the stops, the co-op, the grocery store, and then that's one stop, and then the next stop isn't until Motel 6. That's quite a distance. And so for someone who's trying to catch the bus, there's so many different places you can catch the bus along that route that you figured it out. I mean, there's this big open space near Washington Street, you know, on 101 going south. That's one thing. And then the electric buses in the city, perhaps. And then the electric buses in the city, perhaps maybe the city buses used electric. So we don't get rid of that. And that's just my take. I don't know what everybody else want. And the busing options include versatile seating. Yes, I think it's very necessary for those who travel with, I don't know, baby carts, carts for groceries, or just suitcases or whatever. And so some of the buses that's offered have seating in the front, which is, or which would help, you know, make it so that you don't, better use, better use of the seat. You can sit, have your cart and still not be blocking the, the aisle, which could be a hazard as far as of safety. And the increased customer service hours and like, yeah, increase the customer service hours. And of course, increase the services that's being provided next Sunday. Right now, the buses are not running, buses, bus are not running on Sunday. So if you can increase it so that the bus service is running on Sunday, and then more than two, two buses, regional buses per hour, that would be so much, so many more, more buses than two per hour. And then the routes, it's so great that what you got, that's great. But I mean, the actual, is there any reason why, I mean, is that the most efficient, the route that's out there?
Thank you, Latonya. That's your three minutes. And Colin Fisk?
Hello again, Colin Fisk, speaking for the Coalition for Responsible Transportation Priorities. I first wanted to just briefly address Councilmember Bauer's question. It is true, actually, that most hydrogen fuel today is derived from fossil fuels. And that's a problem. And so the, the hope is in the long term that it will be what's called green hydrogen, which is made from water using renewable electricity. But that's not really widely commercially available today. And so as, as Greg knows, I'm a big proponent of making sure that as we go down this path, that we, that we source green hydrogen in the future so that we are actually getting off of the, the carbon train. In general, I want to express strong support for the city taking this first step towards developing a regional multimodal transit center downtown. This is something that's been needed for a long time, and I'm really happy to see it start moving forward. And I'm particularly pleased about the idea of pairing it with much needed affordable housing. This is early in the process, but I wanted to lay out just a few of the important features that I think the city should be considering as it pursues development of the transit center. The first is being attractive and welcoming and comfortable and accessible for everybody, including people of all ages and abilities. And I think that means, among other things, weather protection and good lighting and probably some other businesses and services. I was glad to hear talk of it being able to accommodate not just the local buses, but also Amtrak and Greyhound, as well as bike and scooter and car share facilities. I think that's really important. Making sure that we design the bus access points if they are leaving the roadway at all in a way that minimizes conflicts with pedestrians accessing the facility. Making sure we have extensive, secure and weather protected bike parking and easy and accessible ticketing for all of the available services. So of course, there's lots of other things to think about, but I just wanted to put these ideas in your head about, you know, comfort and accessibility, make sure this is the most usable and productive facility possible. So again, it's sorely needed and I thank you for moving forward with it.
Thank you very much. Do we have any other public comments? I don't see any. All right, I will bring it back to council for a recommendation or? Councilmember Royal?
I move that we approve an MOU with Humboldt Transit Authority establishing terms and understanding between the city and HTA concerning the development, construction and operation of an intermodal transit center.
I'll second that. Thank you very much. We have a motion and a second. Do we have any more discussion on this item? Councilmember Royal?
I know it's shocking that I would have more to say on this. Thank you so much, Greg, for bringing this forward. And to the attorneys who looked over this to make sure that it was a good first step, I'm really excited that we have the opportunity to apply for this. And there are a lot more things to be designed and worked out and technologies to be incorporated and housing to be planned and a whole public process to go through for that. So this presentation was, was somewhat vague on detail because we want to really be able to engage the community or some of these other elements, like the housing piece in particular, and what the building looks like and exactly what goes where. So this will allow HTA to apply for the grant. And as both our representative to HTA and the Board Chair, I just want to thank everyone for seeming supportive so far. And I hope we all vote to support this. I think this is, my sense is that this is something we are all wanting to see in our community. But I also just, yeah, I'm so appreciative of Greg for having, for coming here tonight and being available to discuss this. And then for this vision and willingness to take on something really big, because this is a big, big grant and a big suite of changes for HTA. So kudos to you for taking that on.
And thank you for waiting through the whole meeting. There's always somebody that has to be the end of the ride. All right, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Are we ready to vote? All right, Kim's already voted, so let's do it. Councilmember Bauer?
Aye.
Unanimous yes vote, motion carries. All right. So now we are going to move on to Section M, Future Agenda Items. And this is where we ask council members if there is an Councilmember Castellano?
Thank you. There is one. And let's see, it's basically would be to, to move forward plans for C to F Street along the waterfront in terms of creating a more kind of publicly accessible and inviting space. It's a city-owned property. There's a few, anyway, you know, we have such a beautiful waterfront. And I think that there's this sort of space where people are walking along and they're like, why isn't this part taken care of? Or why is it, what's going on here? And so I feel like it would be, we have an opportunity there, right, to do something. There's new businesses going in along the waterfront. You know, I won't get into too much about what I'm imagining because maybe that would come later. But, you know, it'd be something, you know, picnic tables, maybe food trucks, partnering with restaurants, sculptures. It would also be a great way to support the arts with like a stage or a movie screen. Anyway, so those are just kind of the things I'm imagining. And I'm wondering if council would be interested in having kind of staff bring forward some options along with cost in terms of how it might affect the budget.
Can I ask, would you think this might work as a workshop first? Maybe?
I'm open to workshopping that idea.
Councilmember Bagel?
Yeah.
Well, I do, I do have a question. So several years ago, there was a charrette that happened with the public and there were four different renderings done. So I'm curious if you'd be wanting to look at those, too, as far as, you know, I'd be interested in discussing it further, absolutely. But
Yeah, I mean, I always want to see what happened at charrettes.
Councilmember Royal?
I'm interested in especially talking about maybe the interim uses. We do have a waterfront specific plan, did I use the right words, RFP out right now. So I just want to not duplicate efforts. But yeah, I'd be interested in hearing about interim uses or other ideas in the shorter term.
Yeah, this would definitely be an interim use type of thing.
Oh, Councilmember Bauer?
Yeah, I'm sure, you know, we've all heard that there's been a pretty large infrastructure bill passed by the federal government and there's billions of dollars. And I think Cal Cities, of which we're a member, has identified kind of what to expect. But I'd like to see if, if staff can look at, and I know it's pretty early on, maybe it's not next meeting, but the meeting after, you know, what we can expect in terms of dollars to keep paving roads and doing great things like we've done at, you know, Henderson Center. So I'd really like to see us take a look at what that money could mean for the city if everybody else is interested.
So I was going to say, let's finish up Leslie's or Councilmember Castellano's and just sort of seal what it is. Okay, so are we doing a presentation? What would you like to do?
I saw mutual look my way. I would think that, you know, a designed charrette and putting in with the constraints that we have with funding and, you know, what we can and can't use do there. I think it may be best if staff came back with some options and then those options can be maybe taken to a workshop to have discussion about those options and funding costs and funding availability.
So would you be bringing those other charrettes forward, though?
The other charrettes would definitely be a funding issue. Major developments and not an interim use. My understanding is you guys are looking for an interim use.
Sure.
Yeah, the other developments are pretty elaborate and include hotels and
Ferris wheel.
Other things. I don't know if there's, I know there was motes in one of them, but yes.
Okay, so you're good. We're moving forward with that, which is fine. I just wanted to be able to talk about it when we do so. And then now we are going to talk about the Cal Cities funding, which, how, what? We're all good with that.
So we're talking about the federal infrastructure bill, right? Like what, what might we see from that? Yeah, I'm down.
Yeah, I would love to hear about that as well.
Yeah, I didn't mean to jump in. I was raising my hand for after Leslie's thing. Sorry.
That's fine. I could, I could juggle these things. So then you can bring that back. What do you think, Miles?
I'll have to get with staff at Department Head tomorrow. I would hope that we could bring it in by the second meeting in December. But if not, I don't know what the timeframe is. The thing is, is if the guidelines aren't out, we may not have much to report as to what we can and can't do. So I think it's contingent upon those guidelines coming out so that we could come back to council with, you know, a definitive idea of what can be done or what, what kind of grants we can go after.
Okay. Councilmember Royal?
I have another one, which is an update on our strategic plan. I was wondering if we could get a roughly halfway update, just to see kind of where we're at with the commitments we already made and collectively decided on. And that would just perhaps be a city manager report?
We could turn it, I think that we, yeah, it could be a city manager report or even maybe upfront so we can get more participation, maybe do it as part of the mayor's report. More people are here to see it.
Sure. That would be nice. Good suggestion. Oh, okay. So we're just, just going to keep coming up with them. This one came up a while ago. And I just want to reminder something about when we all go get, go to conferences and coming back and being able to have a further discussion on the things that we learned. I know that came up several meetings ago. And I do know Will and I talked about at the last conference, there were a couple of presentations that he thought, oh, these could be presentations at a council meeting based on what I learned here. So I don't know what that means, but let's
Well, the, I don't know if it's, it's not listed on that in the agenda anymore, but previously council reports were council slash travel reports.
And then there was more extensive discussion about what was learned at the meetings.
It could still lie there unless there wants to be an actual presentation and find another way for that.
I think that's fine. It just, it came up. I know we mentioned it last time because I think a lot of people went and they were saying they wanted a little more time to talk about it. But we could just plan to talk about it during the council member reports. It's fine. And then if there's something specific, like the HR thing that, that Will was, Will and I attended, and he said, everybody should see this. And I said, could you just present it to council? And he said, yeah, so.
Yeah. And I think that's something like depending on the length of it, we could do as a special study session or something to that effect, depending on what it is.
We can do it during the mayor's report if it's short enough or during a special study session if it's longer. I just wanted to acknowledge that that came up from a few people. All right. That's enough for that. And we can move on to the city manager report, which I'm really looking forward to.
Thank you again, Mayor Seaman, and good evening again, Mayor and council members. So I just have a couple of things. One of the items that we wanted to bring forward to this council meeting was a recognition of Chief Watson is out of town today. So unfortunately, we weren't able to do that. So the intent is to put together a proclamation and probably present it to him at his going away, but then have him come back. Bringing something back. And it was intended for this one, but we wanted him to be here for that. So the other item that I have just quickly is kind of a draft ideas that staff has come up with related to the ARPA funding. I know we discussed this previously. I've gone back and looked at the guidelines and those type of things and some of the, some of the ideas that councils came up with, came up with at the previous discussion about this. And so basically, we have $6.3 million that'll be coming. We've received half of that so far. Funding can be spent within the next five years. You know, it's really meant for infrastructure projects, but also has other, you know, things that the funding can be used for. So I'm just going to break it down to what council is thinking. And we're thinking of bringing this to council in a more detailed format for approval next council meeting. But I just wanted to give you guys a The biggest one is 1.79 million of that going towards wastewater, wastewater projects. And which are projects that will be included in the CIP that will get done with this funding. The next one is something that came up new, and I think that it really addresses some of the strategic plan ideas that came about in our last sessions, is $1.5 million to go towards the regional compost facility for compliance with AB 1383. Has a huge climate, addresses, you know, climate change as well as a regulatory requirement. We've had discussions with the county about them allocating some of their second half funding for that and requesting that that money is there. It's definitely something that needs to be done within the next five years. And we don't have an allocated source for that. And we think that this is both an infrastructure project and also a much needed project for our region. And then a million dollars going towards broadband infrastructure. And then I know council wanted a community-based program. And so we're thinking of taking 10% of the money, $630,000, and developing some sort of grant program for the community so that people can apply and council can consider proposals for the funding. It's going to be a little bit tricky because I'm sure there's ideas out there that may not necessarily jive with this. So we're going to have to make sure that we, make sure the parameters are clear as to what it can and can't be used for. And then another 10%, which would be $630,000 for essential worker stipends for employees that have worked through the pandemic. And then the rest would be what is considered part of the ARPA funding where we can justify certain revenue law. One is about $450,000 that would go towards fire station upgrades and necessary ADA compliance things that we have to do at fire stations three and four, as well as fire station six. And then the last amount is about $300,000 for a new police substation at the Coast Guard Building to bring EPD presence down into Old Town and have C set stationed there in the foot of Commercial Street. So that's the total of those, of those, of that funding. And then we'd plan on bringing that back to council the first meeting in December for a more detailed discussion.
Councilmember Bagel?
Just a clarification. Which fire station?
Stations, I know you're questioning Station 6.
Yeah.
So Station 6 is something that, it's not a station that's up in order, but it's in significant disrepair. And I think that with upgrades to there, it could be used, they have some, it's basically a museum and could be used for that.
Is that on J Street?
Yes. Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Could you clarify, sorry?
Oh, I'm sorry. No, you go.
He called on, for the way for the mayor. Could you clarify what you mean by essential worker stipends?
So all of our city employees work throughout the pandemic. So those employees that have worked with us through the pandemic would receive a stipend for their services during that time. So it'd include all employees that were employed between March 2020, all the way up until November of this year. And we would base the amount off of a full-time worker. And then temporary employees would be included, because we have a lot of temporary employees that work through this pandemic. And so we would give a prorated amount for the time employed by the city for the time that they worked here.
Councilmember Royal?
So if this would be coming back at our first meeting in December, I think my vision for it, because a lot of what you said, I was excited about, but I, I would love to see how it aligns with our strategic plan. So I'm wondering if we could have that strategic plan update, and then perhaps have this, this after, or in connection with that, so that it's just clear how it fits some of our objectives, and/or our capital improvement program, or, you know, to me, the CIP and the strategic plan are guiding documents that I want to make sure that our expenditures align with. So that'd be helpful.
If council's good with that, I think that's a great idea. And we can do this as under action items and reports, and just incorporate the update to the strategic with the ARPA funding. Cover it all in one fell swoop.
Great idea. Councilmember, oh, that was a thumbs up, not a hand raised. All right.
You have to acknowledge Councilmember Castellano's thumbs up. I saw it.
Anything else that you wanted to mention, or are we ready to move on?
That was it. Thank you very much. Look forward to the council reports.
Thank you very much. And now it is time for our council reports. And I am going to go ahead and start over here.
Councilmember Bregel is going to keep it very brief. So we did have our Humboldt JPA meeting with the fire department, and just a couple of things happening with them. They are going to be having their union toy drive, and that'll be happening Black Friday, Downtown Small Business Friday, and then they will be at the art fair again, which is, I believe, at River Acres. And you bring a toy and you get, that's always a good time. And then, and it's a great cause, right? And then, yeah. I'm kind of, my daughter's coming home on Friday, so I'm very excited. And I just had to share that because she's been gone now for three months. And, you know, it's been kind of odd. So that's my personal, personal account of this evening. I'm done for today. Thank you.
All right.
I believe also for the toy drive, if they're still doing it, and I see Chief Robertson is here, but I think they also put a bin at the city hall as well.
Very cool. Councilmember Bauer?
Oh, thank you. Yeah, I attended JPA meetings and other meetings that I represent at the city. I just wanted to say, I'm pretty proud of the city. We've had a busy year of, of construction. I mean, if it wasn't water, it was under construction this year in our city. So it's great to see all the improvements, especially the bulb outs. I know some, I've heard from a few people that aren't big fans, but I know it makes me slow down. I know it's making it safer for pedestrians. So super happy with what's going on in the city. We tend to get so many considerable negativity, it seems like, at the beginning of our meetings. And I wish people would show up and say, hey, I love all the great things that are happening in the city. There are good things happening, you know. It's all same, because there are. And we've got a few more years of infrastructure improvements and all kinds of great things lined up. So I'm looking forward to a new year. And yeah, I know we're all, you know, really busy. And I hope, you know, we stay safe. And really thank you to city staff for making so many great things happen. They're still finishing 14th Street by my house. And I'm looking forward to it being done. But I know it's good for the city and the citizens. So I appreciate everything. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Royal?
Thank you. I have a few today. I want to start by just giving a big shout out to EPD and to POP, in particular, the problem-minded policing folks have been really addressing some concerns in my neighborhood. And it's a very different experience to be on the end of things where I have a problematic property and actions going on there, and you don't know what to do to help make it better. And they've really been responsive and just phenomenal. So please, Captain, will you pass on my thanks? And I will tell the individuals directly. I think I thank them ad nauseam, but I still want to say publicly that it's really incredible to see, you know, the varied efforts that EPD undertakes to make sure that they address concerns. So sometimes it's messy, and there's not an easy solution to, to issues. So I appreciate all their efforts. And let's see, I attended our city chamber two-by-two meeting. And that's always great to get that FaceTime with the Chamber of Commerce. I spoke to a group of AmeriCorps Climate Action, Climate Action AmeriCorps program. And they are doing some really cool work throughout the state. And so I got to speak to them as an AmeriCorps alumnus, and about the experience of doing AmeriCorps National Service. And so that was really uplifting and cool to see that California Volunteers is investing in that program and, and doing that statewide. I participated in an HSU speed networking event, where I got to talk to students about student jobs and internships, and encouraged them to check out what we have in the city, as well as, I wore several hats at that event, actually. It's like, here are all the different things that I'm involved in that you could get plugged into also. And so it was cool to connect with undergrads who are really hungry for those, like, real hands-on experiences. Because so many of the students for undergrads right now have had their entire college experience be on Zoom. So now they're really, like, hungry for those opportunities. And a lot of students have moved back to Humboldt, but many have not. So finding ways to get plugged in, both online and then in person, would be, is really valuable, especially now more than ever. I got my booster. I would just tell everyone, please get your booster and go to myturn.ca.gov. And it's really incredibly easy. And you might feel a little icky, but it's probably worth it. And just for a couple of days. So please get boosted so that we can keep folks out of the emergency room as the winter season comes on and people get sick from more things, it seems. So please do that if you can. I spoke to a group of veterans on Veterans Day. That was really fun. And talked about what it was like going from an enlisted member in the service to an officer. And a lot of them gave me guff because it was a big group of enlisted people. And they were like, ah, you think you're all that? And I said, no, I don't. I'm here because I want to kind of be that voice for, you know, the working people of the military, kind of on the leadership side. So, and I think, I think they appreciated that. And lastly, I mean, I just, I don't often talk about this, but I've, but I, in my, in my civilian jobs, my other jobs that aren't, aren't this, and aren't the Coast Guard, I have the opportunity to write grants. And I, I don't get to write them in the city of Eureka, which is a bummer, because it would be a conflict of interest for me. So I am working throughout the county on grant writing for a community service district to do drought relief, and, you know, Southern Humboldt to do fuels reduction. And it brings me so much joy, and I don't get to tell you guys about it. So even though it's not related to my job on the council or representing Eureka, I really am like moved to have the opportunity to support our community as a whole on a lot of like great efforts. And I know all of us do that in our work outside of here. And we just, I don't know that the community as a whole really realizes like how much collective impact we have. And so I wanted to note that I see you all. I see what you do. And I appreciate it. This has been a very sappy meeting for me, but I'm just feeling very full of appreciation. So I'll pass the buck.
Councilmember Moulton?
Thank you. I also attended the chamber two-by-two with the city, which is really fascinating and interesting, getting a look into sort of their perspective on things. Public commenters earlier notwithstanding, businesses surprisingly doing pretty well in different parts of the city. So that's always good to hear. Mostly, I've been spending my time helping neighbors directly. Get a lot of calls from folks who are seeing situations, and they, like, you know, problem houses or something in the neighborhood, and they just, it goes and goes until they get frustrated enough to contact me. And then I see what can be done. And it turns out there's totally just a phone number for that. So I highly recommend checking out the Eureka City website, or, you know, continue calling me, which is just fine. Shout out to Jenna at the fire department, who helped me put out a figurative fire. And yeah, just recommend people go make those calls. I'd also, outside of council stuff, been helping out Food for People. Their Choice Pantry has some really great stuff right now. I encourage anybody who just needs a little help in their food budget to go talk to them. You don't have to prove that you need food, because everybody does. And you can just go get some help from Food for People. And if you're looking for an organization to support here in the cold winter months, they're a really great one. You can always give them non-perishable food. But boy, do they really like it when you can give them money, because they can stretch those dollars much, much further than we can. And that's it. Thank you.
Yeah, it's always nice to hear from everyone. I appreciate you all. Let's see, I've been attending my regular meetings. This past, I guess, last week now, HWMA had its monthly board meeting. And I just want to recognize and appreciate Jill Duffy, who's retiring after a long and really dedicated career to the community. I know, right? She's, she's an awesome person and fantastic, you know, has just done incredible work for HWMA. And I want to welcome Peter Fuller, who's coming into the position, who's really excited. So hopefully folks will get a chance to meet him. Also, at that meeting, it's kind of neat, Miles brought it up in his city manager report, but there's movement forward with the local task force to move forward. Basically, we've hired and a consultant to, you know, to help move the SB 1383, which is the composting regulations for. The cool thing about this consultant is, one of the cool things is that they are very also active in creating legislation around composting. So not only do they know about implementation, but they really understand the ground in which it's, you know, being made and which needs to be considered. Also, interestingly enough, they're opening an office here in Eureka, which is kind of cool. They've been based out of Sacramento for their career, and Eureka's the place to be. So now you know. If you didn't already, I attended Arts Alive, and it was just so fun to be out seeing art and, you know, just enjoying the public life. And as always, attending more and more housing meetings, really, yeah, just trying to move forward on housing on a variety of vantage points. And then I want to let folks know that this Friday, there's the Old Town Holiday Open House. But just in general, you know, whether you're doing your holiday shopping there, or other local businesses, please do shop local. It makes such a huge economic impact in our community. And if you come to the Holiday Open House, you'll see the Drum Brigade perform around seven o'clock. So if you weren't coming already, now you know.
All right. Well, thank you, everybody. This has been a great meeting. We'll see you in a couple of weeks. And until then, remember to drive slow. Keep your-